Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 10th Planning Commission meeting. This is our one and only meeting in December, so happy holidays and great success in the new year. First thing we're going to do before we go to approval of minutes is we're going to jump to the back of our agenda and deal with a resolution commending Commissioner Gales. This is his last meeting with us. And so we're going to have a resolution read.
I'd like to read this resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Oklahoma City. Whereas Nick Gales has splendidly served the citizens of this community as Ward Eight Planning Commissioner from June 10th, 1995, to December 10th, 2015. And whereas Nick Gales's fulfillment of his responsibilities was achieved with a heartfelt dedication to the well-being of the community. And whereas Nick Gales brought notable skills of analysis and respect for facts to his decision-making. And whereas Nick Gales's expertise and knowledge of Ward Eight has been beneficial to the Planning Commission and residents of Oklahoma City in facilitating decisions that created a better community. And whereas during Nick Gales's tenure, he participated in the development and adoption of two citywide comprehensive plans, multiple area corridor and sector plans, and numerous studies that have guided growth across the entire city. And whereas Nick Gales played an important role in the development of the cellular communication ordinance. And whereas, in addition to the countless hours Nick Gales volunteered serving on the Planning Commission, participating on special subcommittees of the Planning Commission, and attending study sessions and special workshops, he also volunteered his time and energy to the City of Oklahoma City through serving on nine TIF committees and the Board of Adjustment. And whereas Nick Gales's passion for making the best decisions possible was evident in all his encounters with residents and staff, now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Commission and Planning Department of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Nick Gales for his many years of dedicated service toward Eight and the City of Oklahoma City, and we wish him the very best.
Nick, for those of you who know Nick, you'll know and understand what I'm about to say, and those of you who don't will get acquainted with him. Nick's the longest-serving commission member right now and was a great mentor to me. I certainly got an awful lot of advice and guidance from Nick over the years. He's our institutional memory. He can remember everything he did with any piece of dirt he's had to deal with zoning-wise over the last, well, 20 years, I guess. He's also been our conscience, and he's kept us back on track when we veered off, including getting me back on track. And he's done it with unbridled enthusiasm from time to time, but then he's generally been right. He's done a good job, I think, representing the citizens of the city, applicants and protesters, and anyone with an interest in anything going on planning-wise at Ward Eight or citywide. And I'm going to miss Nick and his experience, his wisdom, and his friendship. So, Nick, it's been a privilege to work with you and serve with you, and I'm going to miss you here.
Thank you. That was nice resolution. This has really been a privilege for me much longer than I bargained for or contracted for. My original deal was to serve out a two-year term. I told some of you earlier for the meeting that there've been numerous planning directors, city managers, mayors, certainly councilmen, during my term here. It's been great. People have been wonderful to work with, the city staff people, not just the Planning Department, but other departments that I've had the privilege of working with over the years, self-relationships with. We really have some wonderful people in the city taking care of us. I could start thanking people, but we'd be here all afternoon. One person that I do need to single out is my wife. She's put up with all the phone calls and the time, and, you know, she's been in the background. She deserves a big thank you. And then another, one other person I'll point out, who's no longer with the city, but as far as Ward Eight is concerned, was in the council office, Kathy Smith. Really took care of Ward Eight. She really helped me immensely. And I'd like to thank her, as well as all the, all the people out there that we've been able to work with, homeowners association. I've heard from 14 homeowners associations, 10 of those from Ward Eight since I've announced I'm not going to be here. They've all been very, very gracious. They've been great to work with, and I thank everyone for that. I always have more to say than I should, so I'd like to lay some do's and don'ts on you, because I won't be here to beat on the, on the horseshoe. I'm going to ask the commission, do something about ABCs, do something about term limits for floods, do something about the density calculations, and do something about signage. From a don't standpoint, there's already zoned more than 9,000 apartment units across the northern perimeter of the city in Ward Eight. Be real careful before you zone it more. Again, thank you.
Missed my button there, I'm sorry. Minutes of the November meeting. Move approval of minutes.
Second.
You have a motion, second, approved in November minutes. Cast your votes, and they're approved.
Okay, next on the agenda is continuance requests. There were 11 requests for continuance, which I will read, the item and the date that they're being continued to. Item B.
When you read them, just do the one date, hold down as far as you go.
Okay. The following items are going to be continued to January 14th. Item B-26, this case PC-10436, it's withdrawn. Item B-27, case PC-10434, this will be deferred to January 14th. Item B-28, case C-6774. Item B-29, which is C-6739. Item B-30, which is SPUD-860, and item B-31 for SPUD-861, all to January 14th. Item B-32, which is PUD-1581, would be deferred to February 25th. Item B-33, which is C-6715, also February 25th. And the rest would be deferred to January 14th, which is case B-34 for SPUD-859. Item B-35, which is PUD-1602, and item B-37, which is C-6772.
Anyone here today who came to talk to us about any of those cases which we've just heard read? Make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the uncontested continuances as read. Cast your votes. That's approved.
There are also six requests for continuance that are new requests. That's item B-13, case C-6776, to defer to January 28th. Item B-15, which is case C-6780, to defer to January 14th. Item B-20 for case C-6708, to defer to January 14th. Item B-22 for case PC-10276, deferred to January 28th. Item B-25 for case PV-096, deferred to January 14th. And B-36, which is case PUD-1598, to defer to January 14th.
Anyone come to talk to us about any of the cases that were just read as additional continuances? I'd like to hear item 22 in order, if the commission would agree. It's the applicant for 22 here. What's the commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question also on 36. Perhaps staff could tell me, why is 36 being?
They contacted us a few days ago, and Asseafore continues to work out some more issues.
Well, this is the same, or part of the same land that we've seen before on the other side of this Murphy Boulevard, same developer. I'm not opposed to continuing it, but there are some profound problems. Hopefully they'll, they'll be resolved before it comes back. My regret is, I will not be here when it comes back. I question whether that may be part of the reason for continuance. But, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as to item number 22, normally I would say, let's hear it, but if the applicant is actually not here, which I gather is the case.
Well, I asked, and he's not. But we've been getting this bouncing around for years now, and in its current form, I don't think that we would approve it.
No, I didn't think so either. I mean, the note that I sent to myself.
And I don't want to keep taking up our time, and he was asked to come back with an SPUD. He's not.
Well, then let's just hear it.
Okay. I'll move the new continuances, removing item 22 in here in order.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the additional continuances 13, 15, 20, 25, and 26 on our agenda. Cast your votes. Thirty, oh, 36, no. And 36, my apologies.
And 36, yeah.
Mr. Work.
Mr. Chairman, if appropriate, at this time, I have another item that is a continuance request that I understand is contested. My name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City, and it is item 23, C-6539. And I'm representing some neighboring homeowners who are opposing this request. Brian Kuhn is here on behalf of the applicant, and he's aware that we're making this request, but I'll let him address you. We've been awaiting, this has been on your agenda many times, and has been awaiting the release and completion of the Chisholm Creek Drainage Study, which has been underway for quite some time now. We understand from Blaine Sheffield with Oklahoma City Public Works that it is very close to being completed. They're in the process of preparing the city engineer's report to the city council. We've been, we had requested the report, of course, way back in the beginning, when this matter first became before you, but until it actually is on the city council agenda for consideration by the council, it's not a public record, so we've not been able to receive it. So we feel that we need to see the report and consider its findings in connection with this application. There's a tributary that runs through this property that connects to Chisholm Creek, just on the north side of Northwest 164th Street. And we think it will be significant, what the study finds, and would request that this application not be heard until the city council has received the report and we're able to receive it and review it. So, thank you.
I would like to hear from Brian and from our engineering staff.
Quickly, Brian Kuhn, with you as always, representing the applicant. Of course, we would like to be heard today. This thing was first before you in November of 2013. We were patient for many, many meetings, and then, and continued it, and they started asking continuances. The study, we did this actual study, we know what it says. We're going to use the data out of that study when we design this, when we come to the final plat. And I think you're going to hear from Mr. Sheriff, I'll let him talk, but it has no bearing on what, how our design is going to go. So we'd like to be heard today. And I, for one, am wanting it heard because he is here, because of some comments he's made before about densities and things. We're beyond density. This is a preliminary plat, so I'd like to be heard.
Blaine Sheffield, Public Works. So like Mr. Kuhn said, they're going to use the new study to determine any adverse impacts upstream and downstream with their development. And they're also going to be required to do detention on this development. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but the next.
What you're saying is, Blaine, is that this study is, does not directly deal with this tributary?
With the tributary, no.
That we're talking about, is that correct?
No, the study was on the main Chisholm Creek. It wasn't on the tributary.
Okay.
Okay. Help me here, Blaine. We've been deferring this, deferring it, I don't know how many times, awaiting this drainage study. And then we deferred it when the study got here, and got in Public Works' hands, for Public Works' review to tell us that there, based on the study, that one, that the study was good, and two, that there would or would not be any adverse effects because of this. Now, if I understand what Mr. Work just said, the study's completed, you guys have had it, had a chance to at least do a review, but haven't finalized the report and haven't presented a report to the council. Therefore, they can't see it because it's not public, and yet we're sitting here in a public meeting, trying to make decisions, and we've been waiting for the results of this report for, again, I don't know how long. Can you tell us, you know, I don't need a fancy gloss, high-gloss report, saying yea or nay, but can you tell us from your review today that there will or will not be adverse effects because of this study?
On the tributary, I can't say that, because the Chisholm Creek study wasn't, they just did it on the main channel. It wasn't on the tributary. What Mr. Kuhn's going to have to do is use the data downstream, and then prepare his flood study on the tributary off of the study that they did on the main channel. Our, I mean, we've, we've approved the study, we've just got to, we're preparing a presentation to get it in front of the council.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chairman, might, maybe I was expecting something else, but I thought we were waiting for a thumbs up or a thumbs down based on this study. Now, apparently the study doesn't directly affect this application, or maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, based on what Brian calculates the future. I guess I'm just a little confused.
It's less clear than I thought it was going to be.
Well, Brian's going to have to do an independent study on the tributary. But the tributary ties into the main creek, and he'll use the data on the main creek, and then he'll run his study back up to tributary. And we'll have to approve that.
So we can't tell the neighbors today with any confidence, or clarity maybe is a better way to say it, what the results of that study will mean to them? Is that?
Not right now, because, like I said, we wouldn't know what impacts were on the tributary anyway until Mr. Kuhn does his study.
Well, what bothers me, and maybe bothers Commissioner Gales, is.
Let's take another approach here. Brian, you heard what he said. So now, you're going to take the data you have available from this study, and you're going to submit additional data with your application to Public Works.
When we do our final plat and construction plans, yes.
But we have before us a preliminary plat. So are we at an impasse? Well, do we, I guess my, my question is, do you need, or do we need to request or require that that work be done and submitted for us to go forward with this plat?
May I answer that?
And my, well, my question would be, and how long would that take you to do that?
Well, my question would be, are you, would that be a requirement that you're going to redo on every new preliminary plat that comes before you? Because we don't know those things until we do grading plans, or utility plans, or paving plans, detention plans. Those are things that come with the final plat. The final plat, if it's, if this preliminary plat's approved today, final plat and construction plans would be on his desk in probably three months. At that time, we do our flood studies, when we know exactly all, I mean, we haven't even toppled the property adequately for final plans, and every engineer in here could probably agree that it's too early to do a flood study at a preliminary plat stage. Final plat, absolutely. And we're going to do, we're going to make sure we don't adversely affect any property. I'm not going to do that. I can't do that. He's not going to let me do that.
What I think concerns me about the way these applications come to us is that one of the principal objections we hear from residents when there's a new development proposed is drainage. Drainage is a problem. It doesn't matter whether it's here or many other places in the city. And the public expects us, as representatives of city officials, to be able to help them with this, maybe get them some answers, get them some relief. And we're really, we don't have the tools here to do that in a way that makes me comfortable. But there's no other public forum until somebody goes to city council, if they can, but if we're, it's in plating business, it's here anyway. How do people get heard?
Well, another logistics question here. The study is complete. The study has been submitted to Public Works, but it's not a public record yet, so it can't be released. The city can't release that. I guess that's the legality. So my question to you is, Mr. Kuhn, can you release that data?
No, sir.
Why?
Because it's, it's property of the City of Oklahoma City. I work for the City of Oklahoma City. I'm under contract with them.
Can they give you permission to release that data to a third party?
I guess they could, but until, again, until the city council accepts it, it's going to change some things out in the Chisholm Creek Basin, which you all know is very big. We know of that data. We know what the results of that study are, so we're going to design accordingly. Again, I think this is just, it's kind of like you could stop this way back at zoning and say, until we see the flood study, or our study. But there's, there's, this is, the next step is the final plat with construction plans and the study. There's going to be another hearing before you all, with him standing up there and saying, Mr. Kuhn's plans have now been in place. We agree with his plans. He does not adversely affect any of the property. Since the time we were first before you, we didn't have to do detention until, until I heard about it today. We've agreed that we'll do detention. That means we're not going to increase any runoff downstream. Most of the protests you're going to hear are people upstream of us. We're not going to affect the flow of water on their property because we're downstream. And I think a lot of this, and if we hear it today, a lot of this is a density issue, it's traffic issue, it's other things, that they've used this to slow us down, and it's been very, they've been successful at slowing us down. But again, I'm still going to have to follow a lot of rules before this, before we remove any dirt. And that man's going to have to approve it, or his staff. So you're going to get the data, it's just, it's not at this time, because now's not the right time.
I don't think flooding's not an issue. I can remember the pictures of the water in people's houses and so forth. I mean, it's not that flooding hasn't been a concern for them. I think it clearly has.
Yeah, we know.
Mr. Chairman, I know I've heard arguments about flooding and the concerns for flooding, particularly on 164th, I believe. There have been concerns about how the water flows and eventually backs up and causes problems running across 164th. I think, you know, really given the fact that we don't have, we're kind of forced here to try to make a decision on really what I think is some questionable or inadequate information. It seems like the prudent thing, because we've been dealing with this even before I came onto the commission. So it's been several years in the, in the making that, what, what is a couple of weeks going to do, you know, to, you know, I know, I know we're ready for the development to kick off. I know we're ready, we've been ready. But we do know that the report is at Public Works. We do know that they are reviewing it, and it can't be very long. Wayne, can you give us some idea of when you'll finish with your review, and when that will be submitted to city council? Do you have any idea?
Hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
When you, when the study is public, goes to council, and is accepted, I'd like to ask him a question without putting him on the spot, is it going to change anything that I have to do?
No.
I'm just saying, this study has no bearing on this subdivision until I do my, do my construction plans. That's, and that's why I've said that all along. My developer's been very patient. He wasn't in any hurry, so every time they wanted to continue, it's, you know what, that's okay. And I'd even, John, we even did, or Mr. Yocel, we even did them at two and three months out for a while, because you were tired of seeing it on the agenda. We refined that. He's ready to move forward. This study will not affect the subdivision at all.
Brian?
My design will.
I, you've told us that all along, and frankly, I believe that. I believe you, okay? I think part of the problem we have here is, we've been dealing with this since November of last year. There's been protest questioning whether what you say is, is correct or not, and there's been a request for this document. As a result, we've been perpetually deferring this thing for that study. I think Mr. Work makes a good argument. You know, we've asked for it, we still don't have it. Now, obviously, without the data, they can't hire their engineer to look at it, and they appear to disagree. It just don't, and you're probably correct, there's probably a delaying tactic here. But it seems like we've built this box, and now we're in it.
It's actually been two years.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, two years.
And I don't want to blame it all on staff. We did the study. There was a lot of times it was in my shop, being worked on. So I'm not putting any blame on him. This is a huge, this is the first study in Oklahoma City for a major basin that's been done. It's huge. It's going to have a lot of ramifications for a lot of property. It may not get accepted by the city council. I mean, we have that before us, too. So, and I've just been trying to get along. My developer's not in any hurry, so I said, you know what, that's fine. So, I mean, I'm not going to argue with you. I can see some of your faces saying, you don't want to move forward today. If that's the case, then we're not going to move forward. I want approval. If I have to wait, I will, but it just, it will not, it will not give us any more information.
I have to jump into the confusion. In all the past two years that we've continued, 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 I don't recall ever, ever hearing that the results of your study will have nothing to do with what you do with a preliminary plat.
About probably many, several months ago, I think he addressed the Planning Commission back in, before the meeting, just stating that the results of this test doesn't really affect our subdivision. It'll, it'll affect my design, how I'm designing, but again, I'm going to have to do detention either way. So I cannot increase the flow off of this property. I have to accept the water that's coming on me, as is, doesn't matter what the study says, and I'm going to have to detain, no matter what the study says. So again, it is not going to affect how I design my subdivision. I mean, there's rules for how I do detention.
And you don't know when it's going to be submitted to city council? I mean, when's, when's it going to be presented?
We're going to try to get the presentation to the city council in the next couple of weeks. Then it'll go to council after it's presented to them.
Well, then I think that what we ought to do is continue this for a couple of weeks and see what happens.
It's going to take.
Just see, because you said, council may not accept it.
Well, and not, I don't want to delay any longer, but I don't want to be back here arguing this again. He's going to then say, I need a couple of weeks to study it, because it's not something he's going to be able to read, or his engineer's going to be able to read. This study is, I mean, it's, it's huge.
It's a big one.
It's big. And that's why it's taken so long to get done, for their reviews. It's probably been back and forth between us 10 times, maybe, for reviews, comments, tweaks. Well, our next meeting's January 8th, I believe. Is that right? Or 10th, maybe? I'm not sure which. Huh? 14th, January 14th?
I don't, I mean, I'm ready to go, I'm just saying, he's going to ask for time.
And I'm sympathetic to that. I really am, you know, to your client, to you, to what the progress is. But in view of this imminent presentation before city council, let's see, let's, let's go through at least that stage. I don't know. What do you think?
Well, in, in that regard, there is time here for Mr. Work to cure his engineer and have him on notice. When he gets this big document, I, and I haven't obviously seen it, but my suspicion is that he's not going to have to, as it specifically relates to this plat, he's not going to have to pour through every page of that document.
No, no.
He can drill down and find what he wants. So it would seem to me that if, if the engineer was lined up, he knows it's coming, he got right on it, he wouldn't need a whole lot of extra time. Just editorial comment.
I understand. I guess the reason I'm frustrated is because I know the results of what's going to happen with that study. And it's, it's been a delaying tactic.
But they don't, that's the problem.
I know, I know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If there, if there are no other comments, can I just move that that be added to the continuance for the day? The 23?
To what day?
To December.
No, no.
Uh, January 8th, yeah.
14th. That's just the first meeting in January.
Yes.
That's just a month. That's not enough time for Mr. Work's people to go through that, even if it shows up in the next two weeks.
Well, they're going to have to do the same thing that Brian's going to do too. They'd have to take the data out of the study and they'd have to run their own study. But they don't know how Brian's going to, what his final design's going to turn out. Whatever his final design is, he's going to have to have no impact upstream off of his final design before we'll have approved his plans.
I think, Chairman, we'll ask for continuance until the 28th. And then hopefully they will have enough time to, to go through that. If not, we'll be ready to move forward, um, to see whether or not we will hit a case on the 20th.
Second? Okay, well, in the condition that we get to the city council in the next couple of weeks, the 28th is the drop dead date for going forward. Understood, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Pardon? Do you agree?
Do I have to?
No.
Huh?
I would suggest you do, but you don't have to.
I see the vote coming, so I would say I agree.
It's, it's. We have a motion and a second to continue, uh, item, I guess it's 23 to the 28th of January. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask about item number 10. It is an item that staff is recommending that we defer until January 14th. So I was wondering why we don't just add it to the continuance list?
Well, unless we want to deny it or consider it. She wants to continue item 10.
Well, the reason that they are recommending that it be continued is to allow the applicant to meet and discuss the proposal with surrounding neighbors and allow staff to completely evaluate the application. I'm all in favor of both of those things happening, so, um.
I'm just thinking if they split that lot, we start a land run in there.
Okay. We want to hear it in order? That's fine with me.
Any other requests for continuances? Sir, if you'd give us your name and address, please, for the record?
Okay, good afternoon. Greg Williams. I'm at 7115 Bryant Avenue. And the case is 10273 Jogo, application for Jogo Rezone, R12C3. And we're asking a continuance on that to the first meeting in February, I believe, to give us an opportunity to meet with the technical staff. And some, I believe we have several opposition homeowners associations for you to visit with as well.
This has been around for quite a while. Tell us, tell us, put the microphone closer so I can hear you.
Yeah, I have a very low voice on. Yeah.
Tell us what you want to accomplish in that period.
Well, what we're hoping is that, you know, we can create our technical plan for one on our side and then meet with the opposition, which I understand there's several homeowners associations that are concerned about the zoning change that we are willing and wanting to, to visit with. I've met with the Alliance Group and also Councilman Pettis in reference to setting up some meetings with those homeowners association for us so we can go in and.
Now, when you say technical conditions, are you planning on an S.P.U.D.? What are we talking about?
Yes, possibly, yes, yes. Some engineering, some architectural plans.
I think when we last discussed this case, we were expecting an S.P.U.D. to come back to us.
This is my first, actually, this is my first meeting. This is my first visit here, so, uh, I don't know what discussions was made. We had this plan, the original application was filed a few years ago, and we took it off the table. And we, since then, we just reapplied back here about two months ago. So this is, we're brand new to this, this application once again. So you're probably familiar with it just because it's been on the agenda once, but we've never been before you all to discuss it.
Well, it's been on our agenda since 2012.
Yes, yes. And we, we continued it once there and then we actually tabled it. And we actually had to spend another $1,500 to refile a new application this year. So that was a, a loss of funds that we never pursued it when it was originally filed. So this is our first visit to the council, uh, to the commission.
Well, I would strongly recommend if you come back that you come back with an S.P.U.D.
Yes, yeah, we plan to because we don't plan to spend another $1,500. So we're going to, we're going to move forward with it this, this.
And I'd like to emphasize what the chairman just said. Come back in with an S.P.U.D. I would strongly recommend that because otherwise it's going to be a problem for you.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm used to problems. I've been here before.
And, and let me add one, one more thing to that. Your property runs very deep up Phillips.
Yes, sir.
So because it's so deep in, so far off of 36th Street, I think that S.P.U.D. should be conscious of that depth in its design and what you put up on the north end.
That's correct, yes.
So, what do you say February 1?
Just, just to be clear, the, you know, the S.P.U.D. will allow us to know specifically some more specifics.
Correct.
And that'll allow us to be able to evaluate what you're intending to, to do with that property.
That's right, yes.
So, um, take the advice of all of the commissioners and come back with an S.P.U.D.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're fine with a, a S.P.U.D., you know, we, because that's, that's kind of the, the direction we're heading. We just know, it's, it's just not conducive for an R1 residential, so anything other than that, we're fine with.
So what date did you ask for again?
Let's, let's go in February sometime. That gives us a good, a month to meet with the, the opposition and, and create a, at least a good preliminary design.
I don't have a calendar. Does somebody have one? The end of February.
February 11th? February 11th?
The end.
Second meeting?
Second meeting.
25th.
February 25th.
February 25th.
Sounds good. It works, right?
February 25th. And come back with a plan, not a continuance.
That's correct. Yeah, 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 I'm done with it. Okay, thank you, guys.
All right. We'll need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, are we now on the continuance? We have 13, 15, 20, 22, 25, and 26, or, and I'm sorry, 36.
We voted on all but 22 earlier.
Okay.
So we just need to continue.
Okay, we're adding 22 to that, or putting it back into that list, if you will.
Putting it back in to February 25th, I guess.
Correct. Go move.
We have a motion and a second to continue item.
22.
22. That's right. Okay. To the 25th of February. We will see you then.
Happy year, Bellzone.
And it's approved. Before we go to the consent docket, I'd make an observation for those of you who come to us with final plats. Looking at the consent docket, the cases that are on the consent docket have either two or three TEs with them, meaning that sometime between the preliminary plat and the final plat, you've dealt with all the TEs that were before you during the preliminary plat stage, including things as minor as getting information in on common areas and amenities and so forth. We want final plats whenever possible to be on the consent docket and save us a lot of time. And those things should be incomplete and submitted with the application when you come in for your final plat. So going forward, if some of those things aren't done, you may wind up finding yourselves being continued for lack of some of those items that you should have put in following the preliminary plat stage. So some of the final plats we see later, they probably could have been dealt with on the consent docket. And we'd like to see that going forward.
So I'll read the four items on the consent docket. Item one is C6773, the final plat of Summers Point, Phase 11. Item two is C6777, the final plat of Cobblestone Office Park. Item three is C6783, the final plat of Ironstone, Phase 3. And item four is C6778, the final plat of Asheville, Phase 4.
Anyone come to talk to us about our consent docket today? Items one through four on the agenda.
Move the consent docket.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. And that's approved. We're now going to go to the art master plan presentation out of order. And then we'll get back to the items in order on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Robbie Kensel. I'm the liaison for Arts and Cultural Affairs in the Oklahoma City Planning Department. And before I begin, I want to recognize two very important people to the development of the plan and the process. The first is Michael Laird. Michael, would you stand? Uh, Michael is the president of the Cultural Development Corporation. They are the group that has developed the cultural plan for the city. And they applied for the National Endowment for the Arts grant for the city and then also contributed funds to develop the plan. And I'd also like to recognize Liz Eichmann. Liz, if you'd stand. Liz is also on the Cultural Development Corporation Board. She is also an Oklahoma City Arts Commissioner. And she co-chaired the effort along with Arts Commissioner Jim Hasenbeck, who was not able to be here today. But I just wanted to recognize both of them because they've been working on this for several years now. So thank you both. So I want to bring you through, give you a little context for the evolution of our master plan. Okay, the Oklahoma City Council established the Arts Commission and an ordinance, a passive 1% for art ordinance in 1980. And the ordinance was passive. It said you may spend funds on art, and that did not happen a lot. By 2000, the Cultural Development Corporation emerged as a think tank on arts and cultural programming and events and what was happening on the ground in Oklahoma City. And so the city for a decade contracted with the Cultural Development Corporation to produce plans and studies for the city and report back to council and then to also study the economic impact of the arts. By 2009, Oklahoma City Council adopted a 1% for art ordinance. It's 1% of the budgeted construction cost for any building or park or major renovation. And it applies to all the trusts and authorities of the city who have also adopted it by resolution. And it also applies to any future bonds, sales tax initiatives, and TIFs. In that same year, 2009, the Cultural Development Corporation was commissioned by the city once again to develop our last cultural plan that we are currently implementing. And this is the results of that plan. Strategy two of the five strategies was one that dealt with, all the recommendations were developed around making sure that the 1% for art ordinance was successful for the city. So you can see in strategy two, it outlined a recommendation for an advocate inside the city for arts and culture, and that's the liaison position that I'm now currently filling. Also updating city zoning and permitting to accommodate art projects. And then the recommendation for a comprehensive public art master plan so that the city's ordinance would be successful. And so out of the gate, after the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs was established in July of 2012, an application was made under the Cultural Development Corporation, who had the history of arts and culture for the city, to the National Endowment for the Arts. And it was awarded the following year, providing the funding. And so a national consultant was sought by the task force and they hired Gail Goldman. So in the course of, of Gail's visits to Oklahoma City and working with the advisory group, there were meetings inside the city with several important departments, trusts, and authorities in carrying out the ordinance. Also, over 200 people were either interviewed or invited to focus groups. And public meetings were held on each visit. Many of those included architects, developers, neighborhood leaders, commercial district leaders, and of course, artists. And so I'm going to go through the 13 priorities very quickly so you can see what the community wanted. First of all, setting the bar as high as possible in public art selection. Involving artists early, there's a lot of cost savings and you can get more art for the dollar when you involve the artists early. Streamlining our internal allocation process so planning can begin as early as possible when carrying out the civic projects. Standardize administrative practices so there's a lot of policy and procedure to guide the program. Clarifying the role of the Arts Commission. Their role has not been updated since 1980. And so certainly with this new master plan, that will be necessary. It's the largest commission body of the city with 15 members. Simplifying permit, permitting process, which has already begun with a lot of public training on things like the mural process. Engaging the private sector. It was never the idea of city council that only the city's art program should be invested in the community and producing public art. The idea would be that it would be a good example and that it would leverage the private sector and show good examples of what part, public art could be for our community. Expanding public art into neighborhoods. The 1% as, as you heard right now, only applies to buildings and parks. It does not apply to roads, streets, and bridges. So looking for ways that maybe through technical assistance, public art could be expanded into neighborhoods and also help to schools. Providing a resource for finding artists. We heard this a lot from developers and architects, the design community, that they might want an artist, but where could they find one that had some experience with public art? So we've already started a pre-qualified artist pool. And we're on our second year of that. We published that on the planning department's website. And then building local artists' capacity. We've seen a lot of, a lot more mural applications here in the last two years since we've been working on this. And so, and we think that that's a result of the 100 people that we've trained in how to properly permit and mural. So continuing that and building capacity. Creating a mechanism to accept gifts of artwork. There are a lot of people that want to donate artwork to the, to public spots. But there isn't, there hasn't been until the liaison position was established, a way to go to a single point and to get help with that. And also to identify potential funding to make it happen. There's foundations that need to be built. There are applications for permits and reviews. And figuring out who all the people are within the city to make that happen has been a very important part of this. Identifying potential public art sites. With sites identified, uh, public art investment from the private sector can be funneled to proper sites. And with some guidance on what that artwork should look like, what size, what scale, what materials might be appropriate. Good example would be like trails or parks. Good example would be like trails or parks. And increasing the visibility of public art in Oklahoma City. Portals to find where the art is, who the artist is, what kind of materials, when it was installed, and also getting updates, like say on Facebook, when public art is commissioned by council or the trusts and authorities, and when public art is being fabricated, updates on that, and when it is installed. So we use social media quite a bit. So there are three pages of implementation actions that are recommended. You can see in your plan book, we went ahead and indicated those that we already completed because they were easy to do, and they made a lot of sense. And then we also have highlighted those that are in process in yellow, so you can see we've been working hard over the three years, not just producing the plan, but trying to make things happen that way. And then things that are in blue are the things that have been waiting for this process, the planning commission and council, before we try to implement those. And that's why we're here before you today at this final hearing, to ask for adoption, to implement. So here's the schedule. Today, we're here for our final hearing, and then we hope to go to, depending on your action, to city council on the 22nd for that hearing. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? We certainly want to thank everybody who's been involved in this process. I know how long it takes to bring a plan like this to fruition. It's been a lot of years and a lot of people involved, so thank you all for the effort to do this.
And I repeat, Chairman's, congratulations for the work that you've done. It really is significant, because I recall having been in this community for 45 years or more, that there was this one piece of public art, and that was that piece of sculpture in front of the Leadership Square Building. Now that there's another thing, but my question is, in your opinion and the opinion of the others that are involved in this, is 1% enough? Should we do something, should we do more?
It's never enough, Rob. There's never enough.
But to raise the issue, you know, 1%, I think you said 635,000, is that, was that the 1% or something like that number that sticks in my mind? That could be one piece, you know?
I think as the, as the program is unfolding, the program has, the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs has been in place now for three and a half years, and we're putting together some major foundational pieces for it, and we have a collection management plan now, and we also have summer surveys. And I think that is to be seen. Certainly, cases need to be made for what city council might want to act on and why certain things should be priorities. So I think those things are unfolding, and right now, we're really just funding the public art portion of arts.
And I really do think that because of what work you've done on the committee with Mike and others that are doing this, that, that council will recognize the benefit of public art and may take steps to advocate even more. We hope so. Congratulations on what you've done, and if there's a motion, I'll move to what...
Need a motion to adopt?
I'm moved to adopt it.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the art master plan. Cast your votes, and it is done. Thank you, Robbie.
Okay, now we're on to items requiring separate votes. Item five is ABC 847 for an ABC-2 overlay of PUD 262 District located at 7640 Northwest Expressway.
And Nick, this is the first three letters of the alphabet?
What's three?
David Box, 522 Callport Drive. Mr. Gales, it's certainly been an honor to appear before you. I'm just sad that I don't also have a Ward Eight apartment complex before you today to round out the two things you said you wanted to fix. What you have before you is an ABC-2 application for S&amp;B Burger Joint. It's their newest location on Northwest Expressway. As you can see, it's limited to their space that they have leased. Staff has no objections, and we would ask for your support.
No one signed up, Commissioners?
Move, approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item five. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item six is case PC 10425 to rezon 1700 North Martin Luther King from R3 to I2.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, we had asked the applicant to come back with SPUD on this particular application. Last time, it was before us. And I don't, staff, has there been any progress?
It's my understanding there's been no communication. They've not contacted us.
Move for denial. We have a motion and a second to deny item six. Cast your votes, and it's approved, as a denial, I might say, or it's disapproved as, well, whatever.
Item seven is PUD SP 796 for a specific plan of SPUD 796 located at 13900 Macaulay Boulevard.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson and Associates representing the applicant. We tried to fix the signs for you on this one by inadvertently putting in a pole sign, but it got caught.
You mean you didn't really mean to do that?
No, we didn't. We fully intend to meet the sign criteria that was put in the SPUD that we presented before you before. It was in the sign package from the sign company. We didn't catch it when we sent it in, so we apologize, but we agree with the TEs that takes care of that.
Tim, how tall are these? There's no, there's no measurement. That's the first page?
Well, we have to meet the...
Of the big sign.
Twelve-foot height.
Twelve feet?
Any higher than 12 feet.
And no one signed up.
This is an application of a specific plan. Your client's specific plan, okay? It comes to us not in conformity with itself, if you will, and you say that was an oversight. I got it, and I can accept that, except with the history of this site and the applicant making assurances and then changing his mind, because frankly, he's politically connected and he's gone around us. Can you give us any assurance we're not going to see another change here?
The, the information that was provided to us came from the actual user, the hotel, and, which is the tenant for the client that owns the property.
Okay, and they want more signage, don't they? And they want taller signage, don't they?
No, they want to put in what we instructed them to put in. It's just their sign manufacturer gave us that information, and we just did not catch that they had a pole sign in there because that's in their standard package. But that comes from, not from our client, but from the end user, the hotel. So their package, their sign contractor, architects' plans are included in here. All that's been vetted out through the building permit process. As far as we know, they meet every other criteria that's in the SPUD.
Okay. You're here, your client's here, and the end user resident's in is here, okay? You're representing to us that you and your client are good with this. What about the end user? Are they good with it?
Yes, yes, we've been working directly with their architect.
So they're not going to come back, put pressure on your client, put pressure on our staff, and want a change?
We specifically called regarding the fact that the sign was in the sign package, and that was an oversight on their part, and we didn't catch it either. They, they said, yeah, we don't intend to put a pole sign on this site.
Well, now we can disregard the staff comment about the signage not being in conformity with the plan. Is that...
I believe that the TE actually, if we accept TE one, that brings it into conformity.
Right.
Yes, and we will accept it.
But the comment was the signage permitted within this specific plan contains pole sign from 20 to 100 feet in height. And it goes on, but pointing out that the plan calls for a maximum of 12 feet.
Correct. We did talk with the staff when we found the error.
Move, approval with TEs intact.
We have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item eight is SPUD 864 to rezon 12311 North May Avenue from C3 to SPUD 864.
My name's Mike Dedman. I'm with Carlson Consulting Engineers. My address is 7068 Ledgestone Commons, Bartlett, Tennessee, and I'm representing the applicant in this case. I also have Mr. Andrew Shank here with me to represent the discussion with signage.
My big question about this is I was looking at it, is why, if we know it's going to be CVS, we have all of these uses?
Those are all 47.
Yeah, and if we have all of these uses, why have we, and if every reference to building height and setbacks, landscaping, and so on, is to C3, why have we bothered to call it an SPUD? So I'm, I'm just a little kind of...
Well, I raised the same question with staff. However, I've been out, so I was a little tardy and wouldn't get the question raised, and the response came to me late yesterday, and they, the response was they're willing to reduce the uses to about a dozen, which all really looked okay. You know, there's a couple in there that are, are still suspect, large and small gasoline, for example. I'll just ask you, you want large and small gasoline on that site?
No, sir, that's not the plan.
And if you do, where are you going to bury your tanks and how are you going to service them on a corner lot with a drugstore on it? I mean, those need to come out clearly. The, there was also some, I've forgotten exactly what the uses left in, but the big ones were the gasoline. And then there's the issue of the signage, but rather, and I don't know what your timetable is, but rather than try to amend this thing on the floor, I'm wondering if you'd like to, to work with staff, get it down to those half dozen uses and clarify the signage for us a little bit. Couple of comments on the sign. We have a rendering that shows it, from a dimension standpoint, to be 30 feet tall, with about 40 feet of electronic billboard on it, or EMD. However, the heading on the schedule says 40-foot single pole sign. We need some clarification of that kind of...
If you'll let me at this time, let Mr. Shank come forward, but we're, we're actually going to propose a much lesser sign than what you have there that's, that's closer to in compliance with what Mr. Gross told me that you guys would be asking for.
Well, again, I'm, I'm asking if it wouldn't be better to sit down with Mr. Rhodes, clean this thing up, and bring it back to us for the meeting in January?
Well, I'd prefer not to do that because that will delay the closing schedule for my client. I mean, if we, if we have to do that, we have to do it, but I, I think you might like to hear what, what we're proposing with the signage.
Okay.
If you'll, if you'll just take the...
I'm willing. Well, let's hear the signage for just a minute, and then we'll come back to the uses. Let's see if that discussion helps us. Give us your name and address, please.
Mr. Chairman, Andrew Shank, 2720 East 21st Street in Tulsa, Oklahoma, with Eller and Dietrich, here for CVS to address some of the signage comments. What's, what was originally submitted after comment from staff, CVS has authorized me, and I'll, I'll just hand this up, to do a monument-type sign. We're going to have to relocate the signage that was proposed on May because there's a water line restriction. We think we've got the footing to put the smaller sign on May, and then we'll shift a monument sign over on 122nd with the caveat that the, the difference in the staff recommendation on the design standards is in a prohibition on electronic message boards. This electronic message board is, is important to CVS at this location. It's consistent with the other uses in the surrounding area, otherwise allowed by right in the C3 District. We understand we're here on an SPUD, but these were, this is kind of the proposed revised standard, and I'll hand it to...
Yeah, let, let us see that. Give it to our clerk here. We'll pass it around. Give us a minute to take a look at as it comes around the horseshoe, please.
Absolutely.
I think it's just a small, bigger version of what's not.
You mean I'm looking at a 30-foot sign on one side and a...
No, this is a 15-foot, 15-foot monument sign proposed.
Well, yeah, I see that, but then I also see another sign that...
That's, that's not what I just handed up, I'm sorry.
They've got a different thing.
Oh, what, okay, yeah, this is...
This is no longer...
Yeah, big difference.
I think with this submittal, with the exception of the electronic message board prohibition, I think this is kind of a creative compromise.
Lance, while that's coming around, I do not have a copy of the email you sent me where things were lined out and shown in green.
Yes.
Okay, now your EMD portion is only 2.02 feet, 7 inches tall, and I don't see a dimension on the width.
There might, there should be a window in the upper left that gives you kind of the face dimension.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We're, we're still going to be compatible with surrounding uses less than would be allowed by right in the C3, so we feel this is...
Oh, well, yeah, well, what's allowed in C3?
Understood.
That's what we're working against.
[laughing]
Okay, now, let's, the...
Wait, Nick, what level of EMD signs are you going to...
I think this is just a level two. This is the, the time and temp, the scroll you see at Walgreens or CVS, it's just the red, it's not the full video board.
I mean, it's not going to be moving, and, I mean, it's going to be static for, what, is it eight seconds?
They'll have dwell periods and then a new changeable message, but not a animated full bore.
Okay, in the, the email I received last time, you had deleted all of the uses except dwelling units mixed. The, why do you need dwelling units mixed? Somebody going to live in this drugstore?
If you'll let me...
Okay, so that one's gone.
We need, sir, we need to get you the microphone. This is being filmed and recorded, and we can't hear you.
Okay, so now you're, you're down to the ones I had in green on, on this deal. And I'm going to read these for the record. All uses are being deleted except administrative and professional office, alcoholic beverage retail sales, that's cell beer, I understand that, convenience sales and personal services, food and beverage retail, so... food and beverage retail services, medical services, retail sales, service general, and now I've got to ask about the last one, retail sales and services, palm shops.
Palm shops.
Where's the palm shop go in the, in the drugstore?
I'm sorry, I just circled back and said retail sales, but we don't need a palm shop.
Okay, we'll delete that one. So you're good with limited uses to retail sales and services general, medical services general and restricted, food and beverage retail services, convenience sales and personal service, alcohol beverage retail sales and administrative and professional office.
That is correct, sir.
And you're good with this fifteen-foot monument sign on one side and a six-foot on the other.
With electronic message board on the fifteen-foot monument.
Yeah, right, and I'm going to comment on the E M D sign. Know what a fan of E M D signs I am. Never met one of mine.
Uh-uh.
But, if I take you to one hundred and twenty-second and May Avenue, and I look at the corners, and I even look down May Avenue, we have banks with E M Ds, we have that other drugstore that these guys don't like to talk about with an E M D, they're everywhere. I'm good with this.
At level two.
At level two, oh, certainly. And I say level two, I would like to have the personnel who enforce level two because I drive around town and, you know, I count maybe a little too slow, but when I count to eight, I've already seen three pictures on a lot of these signs, but no, I'm good with level two, good with the E M D, good with the uses, and certainly the overall use of the drugstore use.
Now, let me comment on the height of the sign. The application that was just before you, the Marriott, that's on the Memorial Road, a major highway, and they agreed to a twelve-foot sign on, you know, this is like fifteen-foot, we're talking about fifteen-foot, twelve, eight, the T E was eight, you know, and that's kind of what we would look at. On that corner where you are, and I'm really, I'm like Nick, very familiar with it, if you're going to go head-to-head with the other guy over there, well, they win on sign height. It always looks to me that you ought to be a lot better than that, and you are with your monument sign. I would prefer that you go down another three feet, a twelve-foot monument sign, and then the six-foot monument sign on the direction with an E M D in it.
I understand the question.
I have to tell you that I would consider this the model sign package for most anything that would come before us on a corridor like May Avenue, for example. We're fighting much worse sign proposals all the time, and I think this is a very good compromise, and I thank you for it.
Well, let me expand on that for just a, again, go to the corner, go to fifteen feet.
I know the corner, I know...
Well, and Bob, you just said it, they're ahead of the standard because the fifteen feet is below what everybody else has. So, you know, I'm with John on this one.
Well, I keep trying to press it. I agree with you, John. I agree with you. I appreciate you coming down from fifty-foot pole sign down to a fifteen-foot monument sign with a level-two E M D, and as John said, you know, it's maybe the best we can get for where we are without counsel, coming into the play and adopting a sign ordinance that applies to all of Oklahoma City, which we've been waiting for for years, but, so I don't oppose.
Thank you. Miss, Pam, you're standing over there. Do you have something to say in this case? Just look prepared for something, okay?
[inaudible]
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move approval with the amended sign package that we were handed, the fifteen and the six, and with the uses limited to those I read.
Okay, is there a second?
Second to motion.
E M D level two.
E M D level two.
Okay, have a second.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the case, amending the signs to the submission we got today and limiting the uses. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item nine is P C ten four thirty-five to rezone eighty-eight oh two Southwest Forty-fourth Street from R one to R two.
Good afternoon again, Tim Johnson, Johnson and Associates. This is an application to rezone this small piece of property to duplex. It is adjacent to the C three, as you can see on the map. It looks a little strange on this map because there are changes being made to the plat south of there. There were some drainage issues that weren't addressed in the previous plat south of there by the previous developer, and so once we got involved, we figured a lot of that out, and that plat's going to change, and that'll be coming before you. So in the meantime, we're working on this tract to get the R two zoning, and then we'll come right back with a final plat for this.
No one signed up, Commissioners? No T E's. We have a motion and a second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item ten is S P U D eight sixty-two to rezone fifteen zero zero one Meadow Creek Lane from double A to S P U D eight sixty-two.
My name's Sonia Weaver, five thousand and one Stacy Lane, Oklahoma City, and I'm here with the homeowner for property, subject property, and it's for a rezoning request to change from agricultural to residential. They bought the property in two thousand and twelve with the plan to live in this home, raise their family. They've since decided that this property, or the home, is not of the configuration they want, and they would like to build another property. That's the purpose of this break-up of the property from one parcel to two. The plan is, is to sell the property with the existing home on track one and to build next door to the west for property on track two. They like the school system, they have their friends around there, that's the purpose in wanting to stay in the same neighborhood, so the request is to divide the property and be able to rebuild.
Have you read the recommendations of the, our staff?
To defer?
Yes.
And to talk to the homeowners?
Yes.
I do have a homeowner here, and he has already gone around and spoken with others, other surrounding property owners who are in agreement, other than these two that had submitted letters. And he had spoken with them also, but these two did file a protest.
Got several that's in opposition as well, and I think you need to sit down with those folks and talk, and I would recommend that we defer this until you do do that.
I'm frankly concerned that if we start splitting lots in this area, this will just be the first, and all of a sudden we'll be changing the character of the area, and I'm not sure I think it's wise to split a lot of homes.
I'm not really happy about this myself, and I'm not even saying that even if you got the homeowners, the rest of the homeowners that disagree with this, I'm not sure that I could vote for it because of what, you know, what the area is all about, and I, you know, I definitely would not vote for it today, so, and I would, I would recommend that we deny it if we don't defer it.
Okay, then let's defer.
Make a motion to defer item number ten until January the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the item. Cast your votes, and it's continued.
Item eleven is S P U D eight sixty-three to rezone seventeen hundred Northwest Seventeenth from P U D six forty-three to S P U D eight sixty-three.
Hi, my name is Steve Hurst. I live at thirty-nine oh one Red Deer Crossing in Edmond. I am the property owner and the applicant.
Could you explain what it is that you do or what your intention is with this facility?
Sure. This facility has been a convalescent home, which was for adults, and in the current zoning, it has the actual word adult. We were approached by the state of Oklahoma, as you may or may not know, there's an enormous foster kid problem that we have in our state with needing places for those kids to reside, and they approached us, and our facility meets all the codes, it meets all the fire codes, it's very well laid out, and they asked us if we'd be willing to take kids. And unfortunately, our previous zoning had the word adult in it, or we would have already been zoned. So all we're doing in this application is removing the word adult so that we can take kids twelve to eighteen years old.
On the application, the density shall not exceed fifty-five residents.
That's correct.
And is this a single-family home?
No, it's a multifamily dwelling. There's two different buildings that are two-story tall, it's approximately, there can be fourteen units in there, two-bedroom apartments.
And really, and is, I mean, will they stay there?
Yes, full-time.
For a period of time?
That's where they live, full-time. We have full-time staff there that's, they're twenty-four hours. They have one staff member for every four kids, so it's very well supervised. We have in-school teachers that come in to teach the school, teach the kids, full kitchen, so they have their meals there as well, so, yeah, meets all the codes that the state is looking for.
You're using the facilities for adults right now?
That's correct.
So what's the census right now?
Well, currently, we actually, as you guys know where this is, it's in the Plaza District.
I know, that's the word it is.
Yeah, me too.
And as the Plaza District has gotten considerably nicer and more retail and more visitors, there became a conflict between our residents and parishioners or visitors to the district. And to our operator's credit, he recognized that and therefore decided it was time to move them to another location which he has. He approached me, his ministry approached me to see if I'd be willing to buy it, the state approached us after I'd put it under contract to see if we'd be willing to provide these services for the kids, and that's where we are today. So the density currently with adults will be less than the density with the kids. We'll have up to thirty-four kids.
Okay, you're up to thirty-four. And what was the maximum on the adults?
We had twenty, what was the max? Thirty-six?
Well, about the same. You would take about the same.
And we'll have full-time staff there as well.
Thank you.
And what age are the, when you say kids?
Twelve to eighteen.
Okay.
Tell me a little bit...
These are kids that are just products of the system. They've been taken out of abused home, neglected homes, there are no kids that have criminal records or anything of that nature. These are just kids that are in unfortunate situations, that currently have no place to go, so they're either put in homeless shelters or other beds that the state's able to find. I mean, it's a chronic issue in the state of Oklahoma right now. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's right, I'm sorry. Tell me a little bit, what were the issues that brought the previous facility into conflict, and why do you think they will not continue to be issues with...
The issues before were, a lot of our tenants had mental illness, schizophrenia, bipolar, so they had the tendency to act out.
I see.
They weren't required to stay on-site, so they were able to roam because they're adults, so they would have more contact with visitors to the district.
I see.
The kids won't, and in fact, I've been so encouraged, a couple of them are going to try to come today. We've met with the Plaza District, P O A, we've met with Classen Tin Pin, we've met with the Gatewood District, we've met with the District House and the Parish Church, and they've been so encouraging with welcoming what we want to do, that we're working on an advisory board of those folks to make those kids part of the community so it feels like home, so whether it's getting jobs, whether it's cleaning, whether it's sweeping, selling snow cones, whatever the case may be, where the folks that live in the area or work in the area can be part of what we're trying to accomplish. I think it could be a great model for future situations like this.
And remember, the neighborhood was within about three hundred feet radius, is that what the notice is? You have to do, all the neighbors were notified of your application, et cetera, and I noticed there's no protests?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is an area where we have active neighborhood associations, and it does seem significant that there's no protest to the application.
Yeah, no one has signed up.
Make approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eleven. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Commissioner Irwin has asked that we take some items out of order. He's got to leave, and we have three items from Ward Three he'd like to participate in, so we're going to hear item seventeen...
Only if I can go with him.
Sir?
I said only if I can go with him.
We're going to hear items seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one, and then go back to the agenda.
Item seventeen is C sixty-seven eighty-two, the final plat of Cottonwood Creek located north of Southwest Twenty-Ninth and west of Morgan Road.
Dean Colita, sixty, I'm with the K B G E Engineering, representing Arborland Development for the Cottonwood Creek plat.
And for future reference, you heard my comments earlier about this kind of information coming in late? We don't want to see that again.
For sure.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
A little history behind this, as you probably all are familiar with the project. This was a primary plat that was approved April two thousand and fourteen, and there was an original final plat for the phase one of this, and it was withdrawn in November due to access issues, so in the meantime, we've, after withdrawing this application, we decided to meet that requirement and combine the two phases into one phase. So the current application represents one phase of the development. And, you know, on the staff report, be aware that there was a error, I believe, that it did say with Jerome, but I think since then it's been corrected.
Right.
So just make sure you know that, and, you know, we do agree to all the T E's, and we respectfully request the approval of it.
I don't think so. Oh, we do, bear with me. Read that.
Mary Garrison.
If you give us your name and address, please.
Mary Garrison, two zero zero five Edinburgh Drive, Yukon.
Thank you.
First, we'd like to thank the planning commission for letting us voice our concerns on behalf of Westbury South Homeowners Association. Being an ex-schoolteacher, I have, you have a handout. That handout is highlighted so you can see kind of where our concerns are. These are copies of C sixty-seven eighty-two plat on cottonwood with highlights as to the traffic flow, this edition, along with the traffic flow for C sixty-seven thirty-nine, which will occur once both of these subdivisions are approved into Westbury South Neighborhood Association. So if you look at that, you will see that one of the new developments will enter Westbury over here, and Cottonwood Creek will enter it off of Cave Drive. As you can see, that flow will enter Paisley from Cave Drive. The plat has a dash across the drive, so it's a bit hard to identify... from Cave Drive. The plat has a dash across the drive, so it's a bit hard to identify that as an egress and ingress to Cottonwood addition. The traffic from Cave Drive will enter right in front of a wonderful little home called the Westbury Historical Christmas Home. And we would ask the Planning Commission to consider making a recommendation for a tiny little change, that the traffic would come onto Paisley, if it has to come onto Paisley at all, we would ask that it enter on Westbury Drive. That would mean they would have to take out Lot 7 off of Drew Drive, or the adjoining lot, so that the entry on both of those locations could be one entry rather than two separate entries. As it is now, there's going to be three entries onto that road. However, an even better solution would be for Cottonwood to have both of these entrances off of Morgan Road. There's really very little reason they can't do that. It would certainly help the people in Westbury, and it might even be better for them because there would be more, there would be a better, they would have more visual over here on Morgan Road. As it is, the traffic flow will probably go right through the heart of Westbury, because people will use that road to get from Sarah to Morgan. There are schools north and south of that exit on Paisley and Sarah Road. With this entry on Paisley, Westbury South will endure a lot of additional traffic, which presents a danger for its citizens and the taxpayers of Westbury South. Many children ride their bikes on Paisley, and safety issues are certainly a concern for the existing Westbury residents. Please request that the developer take this back to the drawing table and make the changes that we request, either by making one entrance onto Paisley, which would be at Westbury, or better yet, on having both entrances onto Morgan Road. Now, we have a question. Our question is, is it possible for the Planning Commission to request that the Cottonwood addition use only Morgan Road for its construction vehicles? Paisley Road is, has an entrance off of Morgan, but they are small, it's a small, narrow road. There are historical lamps located there. The streets are normal residential blacktop, and they are not going to be conducive to heavy equipment. In addition, we just wonder about that equipment being parked in front of homes on Paisley Road. So I guess that part of my little protest is a question. Can you all request that those developers not allow construction equipment in, on Paisley, but rather enter on Morgan?
We can certainly ask the applicant to be more considerate of the neighbors who are there, and be thoughtful about where they come in and out and park their equipment.
Yeah, and I have discussed this with the developer, and they assure me that they intend to access the property during the construction phases from Morgan. It just makes more sense for them anyway. So that is their plan. Dean, you have anything to add to that?
Yes, that is correct. And it's actually, the City of Oklahoma City is building a 48-inch sanitary sewer line currently on the property, and they've already constructed a temporary construction, because there's a creek there, they have a low-water passing, so they've already constructed it. So that's the logical decision and place to use all construction traffic.
No one else has signed up, Commissioners. Any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 18 is C. 5685, the extension of the final plat of Jet G Farms located north of southwest 44th Street and west of Cemetery Road.
Good afternoon, Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll here on behalf of the applicant. So this final plat was originally approved in 2005. Due to the economic downfall in 2008-9, it was extended in 2010, and the developer is requesting one last extension. We have been told by the developer that he does want to begin this addition within the next year or two. So we would ask for your approval of this extension. I believe there's a variance associated with it.
Commissioners, I have a general comment. This was originally approved as a final plat 10 years ago, and another five years makes it 15 years. I understand what you just said about your developer wanting to go forward, but in general, it doesn't seem to make any sense to me to keep extending plats like this. Come back when you're ready to do something. We'll consider what's developed around that area in the 10 or 15 years since this was originally put together, but just logically, I mean, we automatically grant one in our statute or in our ordinance, but going beyond that doesn't make any sense to me. Nick?
Well, in general, I agree. In general, I agree, John. But if you look at this site, and you look at where it is, and what is there now, I guess my question is, they want to keep it, what's the harm? It's just wide open. You know, if they want to keep it, does it harm something? No. Obviously, if they want to do something different, they're going to have to come back and replat it or whatever. You know, my thought, if I had it, I might want it to expire. But since they're asking for it, I guess I see no harm here.
It just in principle doesn't make sense to me to see the-
In principle, like I said-
Just like, do we want to sunset P.U.D.s, your earlier comment today. How long do these things go on without anything occurring? And then what do we see sometime down the road when we can't do anything about it if we think a change ought to occur? I mean, that's why we're here.
Clarify something for me. When we extend it, do all of the policies that we've adopted from the time it was first filed, do they come in to this application today?
No. It's, we're extending a plat that was done 10 years ago.
Therein lies another issue. You know, we've done a lot for the last 10 years.
Well-
A whole lot.
Sidewalks and things like that in residential areas, but this may not qualify for that in any case. But... Assistant.
I tend to agree with the chairman on this item, and we had a couple of these extensions in the packet today. And I do think that it's problematic. We have a policy and a method to extend them once, but I don't think that we ought to get into the habit. We think about how much has changed in the City of Oklahoma City in the last 10 years, and in particular, with respect to our operating procedures. And we have a new plan, and I, you know, I just, I think we ought to be taking a fresh look at these things, and that's the whole reason why they expire.
Yeah, if they come back, they'll be dealing with the new plan, and we spend a lot of time adopting that as a replacement for the old plan. Well, I'm just not comfortable extending these again. That's...
I agree, and I'm going to recommend denial.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny item 18. Cast your votes, and it's denied.
And then skipping to item 21, which is PC 10 276, this is to rezon 801 Northeast 36 from R. 1 to C. 3.
Extension 21.
I'm sorry, 21. That was 22. Item 21 is actually C. 5639, the extension of the preliminary plat of Kirby Industrial Park located north of Reno and east of Brockwell.
And it's the same issue. Is the applicant here?
I'm fine. Makes it easy. Recommend denial.
Second. We have a motion and a second to deny item 21. Cast your votes. It's denied. Hey, word.
Going back to item 12.
Yes.
C. 6775, the preliminary plat of Truman located west of Martin Luther King and north of northeast 10th Street.
Afternoon, Tim Johnson, here representing the Alliance. Here also today is Michael Owens and Cassie Poore with the Alliance. This is an opportunity that the Alliance is utilizing their efforts to redevelop some of this area that has been undeveloped or vacant over a number of years. Property that was acquired by Urban Renewal Authority many years ago are being reassembled and in an effort to redevelop it. So the charge here was the, because there were some collective lots together, was to create a plat that would allow them to be developed systematically with the method of development that's gone on historically in the area, very grid-like development, and the effort to utilize some development practices that have already occurred there. There's been homes with alleys in the back and rear garages. So this is a continuation of that utilization of the land. This is one of your plats, Mr. Chairman, that because of the number of variances, because of the age of these plats, and the type of redevelopment we're trying to do, it doesn't fit in with our new subregs, our newer subregs that have setbacks and offsets that are different than they were back when this was originally conceived many, many years ago. The, all the TEs are acceptable by the developer, by the applicant. And let me talk a little bit about traffic. I know that there may be some concerns from some of the neighbors that are here about traffic. This did not fall under the criteria of needing a traffic study as part of its submittal, because the number of lots is below 100, and, but we went ahead and looked at it, and looked at the ADT that would be developed by these additional 37 lots. It's about 340, 340 trips per day, average daily traffic, which may seem like a big number to some people, but it's not a very big number for two-way streets. Our peak impact in the morning was like 28, and our peak evening impact was about 34 cars. So a very, very small impact. Because of the way the plat is laid out, there will be multiple points of ingress and egress, both to the garages and to the fronts of the house. We've added right-of-way in this plat to allow for Missouri Avenue to be improved at some point in the future. It's not included in this plat to be, make any street improvements, but that is a narrow 20-foot street on Missouri. So we've added right-of-way adjacent to Lots 11 on the east side of the plat that will allow for a fully-developed residential street to be done sometime in the future. And as you can see, we side up to the school property, and I know there's some congestion because of the school in the morning peak, but there are many streets to leave. Kellum, you know, can be used. The traffic's going to go either south to 8th Street to get to the highway, or north to 16th to go to eastern and north. So we did look at that, and in our traffic opinion, it's a negligible amount of traffic impact when you look at the way the system is set up here in this very tight grid. And one last thing I'll address is the variance to the naming of the street. My understanding is that this is something that was desired by the area to put Shirley Darrow's name on the street. And I know that's not standard procedure to have a named east-west street, but we do have, just on our south boundary, Euclid is an east-west street that is also named. So we certainly think that it's appropriate in this case because of her contribution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, we do have two people signed up. Do you want to hear from the protesters, and then, let's do that. Les Taylor, please. Mr. Taylor, if you'd give us your name and address, please.
My name is Les Taylor. I live at 1719 Northeast 13th Street, which is directly across the street from the Truman property. Now, at one point in time, I was a real estate broker licensed in the state of Oklahoma. I specialize in rehabbing properties and buyer brokerage. For me, development of the Truman site is a quality of life issue, but more than that, it's a financial issue. So I'll just kind of talk about the financial aspects of this briefly. In my opinion, the entire plan for the Culberson East Highland neighborhood goes against every basic common sense, real estate practice and principle that I was trained in, and also experiences that I've gained as a real estate broker. I was a very serious real estate professional, in that I followed the principles and all the basic stuff, you know, all the rules. Generally neglecting the area and lax code enforcement has allowed the blight caused by vacant, abandoned, and dilapidated properties to grow over the years. This blight has caused the fair market value of my property to decline by more than 45% according to my tax records over the past seven years. Even though the property was excellently maintained, I have photographs and documentation to back that up. My primary residence was painted and the roof replaced within the past couple of years, and when I went to refinance it to get my interest rate down, the credit union told me that I have to pay private mortgage insurance, and I've never paid private mortgage insurance on any mortgage that I've ever had on that property. The reason was, they told me that the appraiser could not get any decent comps on it. This is a three-bedroom brick house with a bath and a half and an attached one-car garage. It's about 1,000 square feet, which kind of goes along with most of the properties in the neighborhood. My rental house next door was inspected by AZ inspections. They told me it would take $37,000 to get it up to snuff to where it should be. I had every single item of work performed on the inspection report, which I have in my possession, and then some extra things that weren't on the report. Because of the decline in fair market value in the area, after I completed the work, my tax records show that that property is now, has a fair market value of $17,000. It had a fair market value of $41,000 before the work was done. Now, I would like someone from the Alliance for Northeast Development, or Planning, or anybody else who wants to, come to my house, stand in my front yard, and explain to me how squeezing 36 houses on that tiny patch of land across the street from me, that are ranging in size from 1,400 to 1,800 square feet, in a price range of $115,000 to $150,000, on lots that are only 50 feet wide, and cutting an alley or two down the middle of the property, or certain sections of the property, and I'm looking, they already cut an alley down, they call it Shirley Darrow Avenue, and another one, how this is going to benefit me and increase the fair market value of my property. Now, in closing, I'd just like to say that this neighborhood has traditionally been a low-income neighborhood, and any new construction in there, in my opinion, should cost no more than half of what, excuse me, these people are asking for the price of the new homes being built, whether it's on the Truman site or anywhere else within the Culberson East Highlands neighborhood. I would like to ask anybody who wants to do- I would like to ask anybody who wants to do this if they would be willing to move on to that site into one of those new homes over there in the middle of all of that blight. I would like to see development in Culberson East Highland exclusive of the Truman site to realistically reflect the type of neighborhood that it is. These homes should be no larger than 1,200 square feet, similar in style to the existing properties, and should be made available primarily to people like veterans, working-class people, first-time buyers, seniors, and others who really need decent, affordable housing. I'm sure that there are plenty of competent builders and developers who would be, rather, who would welcome the opportunity to do this.
Mr. Taylor, thank you.
You're welcome.
Margie Presswood. Do you have something different to add than what we've heard? Great. Give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Margie Presswood. I live at 1320 Northeast 11th Street. I've been in Culberson East Highland area for 10 years. I'm part of the Neighborhood Association, and my concern is the traffic. We already, I have photos here to pass to the board to see. This is just the pre-existing traffic that's on Calum right now, without the houses being built and without the traffic from FD Moon. And with the traffic pictures, you have seven to look at. This is at the gridlock time and in the morning and noon, just when the children is being dropped off at Avery Head Start. And this is right across the street from where he was talking about on Calum and in between 12th and 13th is the front side where the houses is going to be built. And then on the backside, we have traffic from FD Moon. With FD Moon and KIP splitting the building, we have FD Moon doing the traffic on the backside of the school and KIP doing the traffic on the front side to keep the traffic flowing. Then at the same time, we also have buses that come through that's trying to squeeze through Calum. And then with one of the pictures, I believe number six after seven, we have a dump truck trying to turn the corner where you have traffic right there at Avery Head Start that is unable to turn in there. The seventh picture is towards the afternoon when the school's letting out, and then you have a school bus coming in to drop off more kids. Now, to us, we've been meeting every month, and we've been having this traffic jam. You also have the city buses running through there also throughout the day. And with more traffic coming through there off of these new developments.
Just one second. Somebody's got a phone or a device that's making noise. If anybody has an electronic device or a phone, please silence them. I usually say that at the beginning of the meeting, and I failed to do it today. You're being interrupted by the noise. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Well, anyway, with the traffic that they're going to add on with these new houses being built, there's not enough room on Calum for the traffic. And we would like a traffic study there prior to these homes being built to prevent the congestion that we're going to have because we already have congestion. And the pictures that you're looking at, this is just Avery Head Start, not including the traffic from the people going to and from the neighborhood, going to work or coming home, or is that the traffic of the buses coming through or the children going to FD Moon? These are pictures just basically at Avery Head Start, which is on the Calum portion of the site. On the other side of the, on the Missouri Avenue and 13th, we have the traffic going one way for FD Moon, for the students to be picked up and dropped off on the backside of FD Moon right there at 13th and Missouri. Will be FD Moon's cars will come down 13th from Martin Luther King all along that stretch, and then they're turning on Missouri, and then they go down into a dip and come back out. Then you have the Calum, and then you also have the bus routes coming through. At this point in time, we don't have enough room to allow the traffic to free-flow. We have many congestion, congested areas. And then with the police departments and ambulance and stuff, they don't have no room to get through here. So, we just would really like for the city to do a study over there prior to any more developing in our community on the Truman site. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
I haven't seen the pictures, but as I mentioned earlier, I know that there's congestion because of the school system there and the buses getting through there. Thank you.
Here are your pictures right here. You can pick those up if you'd like. He's got them, I think, in his hand as well. Oh, okay. He's got them in his hands.
Yeah, this is not uncommon in front of many of the schools in the Elkhorn City Public School System. Some of the streets around the city that have a very similar grid pattern, which there's not a better traffic solution to traffic than this grid, short of possibly signing certain areas to be one-way at one time of the day and two-way at another time, which is not ideal, but I know that happens around a lot of the schools in the Elkhorn City District. So, we are adding a, Shirley Darrow will be a city street, meet the city street standards. The alleys that are proposed are between Blocks 1 and 2 and Blocks 3 and 1 of the plat to the south. And the gentleman mentioned about the property values issue, which I know is not really an issue for this committee, but these are going to be market-rate homes built to the standards that the Alliance has adopted, and they share that on their website. Any developer that will buy this land to build homes has to meet those criterias. And if they're across from a bungalow-style house, they have to build a bungalow-style house. So, very well-written documents. Some of my clients have been developers in here. They like developing in here and have been very successful at it. On Block 1 in the south, south of our proposed area, is an ongoing project of seven or eight homes in that area. And then the Truman East was a kind of an eclectic little patio home project that was constructed and completed. So, this is, again, an effort to redevelop the area. There will be some additional traffic, but I don't know how to solve it any better than it's already solved, so.
I'm just going to remember how efficient you described the grid pattern to be. Next time I see a suburban subdivision come in.
And this is not suburbia.
Well, and I think that's the point. You know, the redevelopment and infill development in older residential areas anywhere in Elkhorn City is difficult and has its challenges. And although it's a wonderful thing to live in close proximity to school, it has its challenges too. The good news about that is that people coming and going from home is not usually the same time pattern as people coming and going to and from school. So, that's a little bit helpful, at least in the afternoons. I think this looks like a wonderful project. I would like for those people who've come to speak to know that I hear and understand your concerns. I do definitely. But I think that you'll find that it is a positive thing for the area.
Okay. First of all, let me say thanks to Mr. Taylor and others who have come to express their concerns about this project. Those are well-taken, and I have heard those. I see others in the audience who, others protesting I need to speak today. Okay? Quickly.
Now, we've been to various meetings down in Metro Tech. We've been to various meetings at the school, at the churches, and the surrounding areas. Now, when we come to gather, they had showed us different plans and what they're doing with all these houses. We had asked them to give us a monument or something for the Truman site to honor the people that went to Truman School prior to it being burned down. They had also said something to us about green space. We're not seeing green space there. We're not seeing any monument for the Truman site, for the veterans from the area or for the elderly. Everything that they was telling us is not what they're doing on the property. They told us they was going to do houses similar to the houses that's there, and they're not doing that. We're getting houses that's more like the outskirts, the, on the outer side of the city. These houses look twice as big as the ones that we already have there. They have adjoining garages on them, and then everything is gated. That's not our community. We don't have all these privacy fences all around the houses in a community like that. If they was to build, they should take in consideration to what we already have in the community and not what they show us one thing and do another thing.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Wait. Okay. Okay. One thing very quickly. Mr. Taylor, come on. This is something that we've been talking about since 2010. We've been having meetings, like Margie said. And I've been to every meeting, and I documented every meeting. I have a briefcase full of documentation where the focus was supposed to be a green space for the benefit of the residents and property owners in that neighborhood. People had us fill out questionnaires. They did surveys. This went on for years and years. Lady from Neighborhood Alliance even drew a diagram of a park, which really looked good. And this is what we thought we were going to get. And all of a sudden, homes start going up. Now, like I said, I've been involved in this since 2010, and I have the documentation. I can show it to you. I kept minutes. I took notes on every single Neighborhood Association meeting, every strong Neighborhood's Initiative meeting that I went to, and I can show it to you. And like I said, I want somebody to explain to me on the site why this is going to be good. And the gridlock around the school and the church is so bad that, I mean, it really caused me some distress from time to time trying to get around the corner. And that's not just during school time. It's the other times also. If the church has an event, they, guess where they park? They park on the green space across the street where you want to build houses. So, I'm just saying that this needs to be looked at more closely. And this is not good for the neighborhood that I live in. I've been in there for over 20 years, and I moved onto that street because it was a nice, quiet street. And my neighbors feel the same way, even though they're not here. The fact is that they, they just don't show up at stuff like this. But I would really, really like a closer look taken at this. And somebody needs to come out on the site and see what I'm talking about, what Margie's talking about. Thank you. Thank you. I know that there's a lot of passion, and we have one more? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We have one. Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is James Doran, pastor of Mount Flying Baptist Church. Been in the community now for 11 years. And my concern is the safety of the children, both at FD Moon and then also the Head Start. During the afternoon, during the morning, and during the afternoon pickup times, we've got cars that are parking on both sides of the street, children exiting cars, families exiting cars on both sides. It creates a very narrow space there on Calum. As you're passing through that area, both Northeast 13th and then Euclid are very narrow also. And so, then if there can be some sort of consideration, I think, I heard someone mention perhaps in some of these areas, making them one-way at a certain hour of the day might be something that would be helpful so that we don't endanger any family or any children in that area as they're exiting this area, especially if we build more homes in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Doran. I know that we're going to move on because I think we kind of...
Alliance for Economic Development, Michael Owens. Just something to the, I've met with the neighborhood a couple of times. Through this whole process, keep in mind, a lot of their concerns, we're going to work with them to work through those concerns. And so, this is just the beginning phase of this development taking place. So, we've met and we've talked even about the property values. We have that information over at the Alliance, and we're going through that. So, every step of the way, we're trying to address the issues that concerns the community. So, we're not absent on that.
Have you met with the neighbors before?
Yes, absolutely. I know, yes, the president, the vice president. I mean, I've met with, with, with all that is present here today, so. And we will continue to, to meet with them.
Thank, thank you. I hear the residents and concern, concerns they have. I think some of those concerns can be addressed, not as it relates to this particular approval or disapproval today, but traffic issues can be looked at and adjusted. I also know particularly that KIP is moving out of that particular facility. And so, it will only be Moon at that point. But I think that those concerns are legitimate, and I want to thank those for coming and sharing today. Given this application and the blight that is in Northeast Oklahoma City, I think it is crucial, this development in terms of really beginning the reinvestment into the community. So, given that, I really think it is, when you, when you put it on the scale and you really weigh it, it's best to see the development in that area come. The church, there have been houses in that community. It was a school at that particular site, but is now looking to be developed. And so, I move for adoption of this application.
Well, you've had a whole bunch of variances before you go anywhere else.
I'm sorry. I got to move, I got to go through all of these variances. I'm sorry.
Well, and before we go there, let me make a couple of comments. This is, as he just said, I've sat here for 20 years, and nothing has happened. Here's an opportunity to turn some things around. When I first looked at this application, I thought, five variances? Come on. But then I looked at how the old plat's that, and I see the need for most of these. Couple of comments on a couple of them. I believe we should approve the variance on TE4 on the site distance. However, I recall a recent case where there wasn't a site distance issue that was a mega-deal. I believe this does make sense, and I would support that variance. I support the other variances, 2, 3, and 5. Number 6, the east-west street, I have a problem with that one. I can't support that one. We need to stay consistent with who we are and what we are. Thank you.
You know, I think, I think if this were a matter of us adopting a proposal to change the name of a street, that would be one thing. But here, since it's in place currently, I think it would create more confusion to change it.
It's not in place now, is it?
No, this is a new street.
Yeah, it's a new street. It's not in place. Thank you.
Well, whatever it is, it can be numbered, is my, is my point. It's an east-west street, and it should be.
It's built to street standards? Tim?
It will be.
Will be. That's why I want to know. Okay, thank you.
Page A of the staff report, what it says is, "The developer is requesting a variance to this requirement to allow the street name Shirley Darrow Avenue to remain." So, I took from that that it's already in place.
It's not built. Well, Nick, I guess you'd have to explain to me what the difference is with this being a named street and one street... this being a named street and one street over is Euclid, and that's a named street, and it runs east and west.
I understand. We do have East West Streets in Oklahoma City that are named.
Okay.
But from a policy standpoint, we try to get away from it. And the question I'll ask you is, when was Euclid named? When did it become Euclid? You can't remember, can you?
No.
I can't remember. Way before, yeah. It was way before us. That, that's, you know, that's just...
Well, the practice is in part to help public safety personnel know what East West Streets are. I mean, if they're numbered, they can find them much more readily. So that's historically been one of the reasons why they've been numbered east and west, so you know you're going north and south, and so how far?
I've, I've lived other places, and I promise you, I really liked living in Oklahoma City for that reason, because it's easy to find your way around, but this is one block, you know, and, you know, what, what would it be named?
Well, let's just, let's just take them a variance at a time and see where they fall out.
Okay. Well, you, you can take all of them except six.
I think we have to vote on them separately.
And vote separately?
We have to take them separately.
Okay.
One, two, three, four.
All right. Let's move for adoption for variance number TE2.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE2. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Move for adoption for variance three.
T3. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE3. Cast your votes.
Move for adoption of variance four, TE4.
Second. The motion is second to adopt the variance to TE4. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Move for adoption of variance TE5.
Second. The motion is second to adopt the variance to TE5. Cast your votes. It's adopted.
Move for adoption of variance TE6.
Did you mean to do that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Cast your votes.
Yes.
And it's approved.
No.
No, it's a variance. Have to have six. Fails. Can we take a motion the other way? Anybody interested in doing that? Nope. Let it go. All right. The case. Approved the case.
Move for adoption, approval of item 12.
We have a motion and a second to adopt item 12. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, item 13 was continued. Item 14 is case C6779, the final plat of dwellings at Sosa located east of Francis and north of Northwest 6.
Good afternoon. David Box here, on behalf of the developer. Also with me is Tim Johnson. This is a final plat. You will remember the preliminary plat was heard, I believe, just last month. There are only two TEs. We do agree with both of them, however, TE number one needs to be addressed because of one of the findings in the design engineering portion of the staff report that states special pavers will not be permitted above proposed or existing water and sewer mains. We believe staff's concern is the city's responsibility to replace those pavers with any work that gets done. We've added two separate notes on the plat that cover that. It will be the responsibility of the HOA and those folks that live there to replace and maintain those pavers. Nathan Mandawal is not here today, but he has joined us via text message to Ms. Terri Massey, and he is okay with, with that agreement. So with that, we would ask for your approval.
Any discussion, commissioners? Motion?
I'm of approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes. Nick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
In a negative frame of mind.
I just thought it was 'cause it was the last case I got to appear before.
Item 15 was continued. Item 16 is C6781, the final plat of Bluff Creek Canyon Phase 2 located west of Portland and north of Northwest 164.
16.
Once again, Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. We are in agreement with the TEs on here, with the exception of TE number three. We think that that was inadvertent, inadvertently put on there. Northwest 166th Street currently goes all the way to Portland, as Portland's being reconstructed. ODOT initially wanted to cut it off, and Public Works staff had worked with them, and they came back with a revision of their plans to include it, to continue to connect it. And so, there's no need to put a cul-de-sac there.
Any idea when that'll occur?
I don't know what the construction schedule is, but they are working right there right now.
Okay, good.
It's happening as we speak.
Okay. No one has signed up on item 16, so I guess we're looking at the TEs minus TE number three?
Move approval based upon the elimination of TE3.
Second a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 16 minus TE3. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we've already done case 17, 18, and we're on to 19. So item 19 is SPOD 858, Theresa and 15, 505, North Penn from R1 to SPOD 858.
Hello, my name's Steve Landis, Land run Engineering, Land run Group, Shawnee, Oklahoma. Two, two oh one West 9th, Shawnee, Oklahoma. Last meeting, we actually went over this and then were asked to defer it. We had originally met with the homeowners to the north in the subdivision, and actually had their concurrence. I think a lot of them came during the last meeting and voiced their opinion of approval for this project. The property to the south is an apartment complex being proposed at this time and being developed. We've met with the developer on that piece of property and, and Sean's back here. Two or three of the things that we'd actually gone over was some relocation of the buildings and adding green belt space, adding the fencing with the columns along the south side. In fact, we've got a letter that we went ahead and, that he had drafted, put together, and has gotten to Lance that we feel should be added, you know, to the document that'd be kind of defined as like TE items, if you wanna call that, that covers all of those items. One of the bigger concerns was the drainage. I think we're good with all of that. Did speak with Blaine Sheffield earlier, this afternoon, and there was a little bit of a problem. What we're doing, we're proposing to tie into the storm drain that goes underneath Penn Street, and he said that's very limited right there, so we'll have to go reinvestigate that a little bit tighter. But we have worked with them, and he's worked with them about working out a solution on all of that, and we feel everything's good to go. And with this letter that they've all, and we've come up together, you know, with the property owners to the south, and may have him go over it as well if he'd like, but we're just requesting approval, if that's possible.
You're in agreement with all of the TE?
Yes, yes, no problem with those at all.
We do have someone who wants to talk to us.
Okay.
Sean Rieger?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Rieger, 136 Thompson Drive in Norman, and as Mr. Landis said, we represent the property owner to the south. We did draft an email to him this morning with five items as to buffer, stormwater, trash facilities, dumpsters, sanitary sewer, and the site plan. We are in agreement of those five items. We submitted them to Mr. Gross, and we, our agreement that those will be added as TEs to the approval today. Lance has them, and so they would go into the record as an approved TE on this item.
Has the applicant agreed with those?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, one question for you, sir. You know who, you?
Yes, sir.
You know who Jennifer is?
I do not, and I saw that email traffic, and I, I don't know, sir. My client is the property owner. Engineer was just with me, too. We don't know who that is, and I understand that that's what Mr. Landis heard was, was some issues happening. I'm not familiar with it. I've simply been asked to deal with the adjacency issues and the development issues, and that's what we've been working on.
Well, I know the, I've spoken with the homeowners president to the north. They're a little upset about that, whoever Jennifer is, and I'm willing to let that slide other than I think there may be something illegal there, representing yourself as a home city when you're not. But if you don't know who she is, I'll, I'll move approval for the application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 19, adding the five items that the applicant has agreed to as TEs. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 20, 21, and 22, and 23 have been heard. We're on to item 24, DA 24408 for a lot split deed approval on property located at 7931 Northwest 18th.
Charles Allen with Hale and Associate Survey Company. This is a modification from the original submitted. We had five lots, had some concerns about the width of the lots only being 77 feet and providing an aerobic system. At that time, we showed you a plan of four lots that were more of a, kind of a four-leaf clover design with a center cul-de-sac. The owner preferred that we come back with four lots that front out onto 18th Street with two common, two shared common drives. We've met with the homeowners, tried to, and have, I think, addressed their concerns about aerobic systems. We agreed to try and perk the site and put in a conventional septic lateral system. If that does not work, we would put in aerobic system, but rather than a sprinkled discharge, we would use a drip system, which is still an aerobic system. However, it's a, the lateral line, small lateral line is buried about 10 inches below the ground. The other, the other probably big concern was the storm drainage that runs through there. Whether we get approval today for four lots or we have the, already the three deed approvals, we're going to have to submit a drainage study to Public Works for approval before we can continue any earthwork out there that we've already started and have been held off on. With that, I think the, Don Stanek's here to speak on the protester's behalf and get out of the way.
Okay. Mr. Don Stanek? Can you give us your name and address again, please?
Don Stanek, 7905 Northwest 18th, property right next to the one that we're talking about. We have a petition signed by 100% of the homeowners, 25 petitioners, and they've let me be the spokesman for the group, so there's only two of us here today instead of 25 people coming in. Our number one concern has been the stormwater drainage, was 54 acres drained down 18th Street and on to what would be track four of the new area and out to the north central part of the four tracks. The preliminary plan that has been presented to me and on, you know, for this board here appears to be a very good plan. We would accept that plan if it's built, you know, it passes the city's engineering and is built according to that plan, and that would do away with our objection to the water. Our second objection has been the septic sewer system. We would accept either regular anaerobic sewer systems or the aerobic type if it is the drip system as, as stated. We would not have any objection to that on the four, three or four buildings. The only objection we would have would be if they went to an aerobic system with the, where it shoots it into the air. There's been too many problems with that system, so our number two concern is, we agree to go with the septic systems as now proposed. The street variance that is up for grabs whereby they would have to build, make the 18th Street up to code on their, their section along the, what, 450 feet of Northwest 18th. We don't have any problem with leaving the street as it is. It doesn't make any sense to us to make 450 feet of a wider street and then go down to the more narrow street from all the rest of 18th Street, so we have no objection to that variance. The sidewalk variance along 18th Street, we have no sidewalks in our area. People walk along the street, it's tree-lined, and it's a beautiful street, and, and we have no objection to the variance for the sidewalks. There was a nice picture presented at the last meeting in, I forget when, we've had several meetings here. In our area, the, the areas being developed and the last seven homes that have been built have been anywhere from 2,000 to 3,400 square feet. There's no mention made of the size of the homes. We would hope that, we would hope that the homes built on the four tracks or three tracks would be comparable to what's being built in the area, but is there any legal thing?
We have no control over that.
It's, it's just our wish, but, but we understand that. There's one more concern we have, and it cannot be legal. There's a 100-year-old oak tree on track four that, depending on where they put the house, whether they move it north or south, they can save a 100-year-old oak tree. It's a beautiful oak tree, and obviously that's not a legal requirement, but it's just a wish on our part. So overall, we do not object to the project now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? Discussion? Mr. Allen? You don't wanna rebut anything he said, I'll bet?
No.
Okay, didn't think so.
I applaud their efforts to work things out with the neighbors. I'm not persuaded that this is a good idea, and I can't support the application.
Any other discussion? Motion?
I'm with her.
Right. Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny item 24. Cast your votes. It's denied.
Okay, the rest of the items on the agenda have been continued? Is that right?
We go back to the airport overlay orders?
Well, the rest of the zoning cases are continued.
That part's true.
And the next item would be item 38, which is the introduction of a proposed amendment to Chapter 59 of the municipal code pertaining to the airport zoning overlay district.
Who's to do that? You!
Well, I did draft this ordinance, and mainly it's just a cleanup ordinance, but when we revised and amended Chapter 12 in the building code, we did not change the section numbers, so they were in conflict now with what was in the other zoning code, and so we're just correcting that.
So today it's just to introduce this for a public hearing at our next meeting in December?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to introduce and set.
The only question I have is, is the airport director in favor of this? Are they okay with it?
It's just cleaning up language and, it's just cleaning up language in the ordinance. It's housekeeping.
Doesn't change anything?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, then, it would be set for public hearing. Okay, we have a motion to set item 38. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
The next item is to adopt your 2016 meeting schedules.
I'd like to suggest that we do two meetings in June and one in July.
I agree with Commissioner Yocel. I would suggest you meet every Thursday.
I can't hear you.
I would, I would suggest you change it to meet every Thursday.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is one of those things, it'll just be more difficult for me to attend. I mean, it's just a deal. My kids are out of school June and July. We're back in school in August, and...
They can come down, and it'd be a civics class.
Yeah. I wouldn't do that to you guys. But, you know, I'll go with whatever. I can be, I can be flexible.
Well, it would be my issue in July, so. Well, and then make it a motion, because I'm not supposed to make motions unless no one does.
Okay, the motion is amending the schedule for two meetings in June, one in July.
Oh, one in August, too? Who did that? Who did? You don't know? Okay, well, we want one meeting in August, one meeting in July. Is there a second? Two in June, one in July, one in August, which has been our... Two in June, one in July, one in August, which has been our historical pattern except for last year. I'm waiting, I'm waiting for a motion in a second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2016 calendar year schedule. We will meet twice in June, once in July, once in August. Cast your votes. And the schedule's adopted.
We'll come back with the revised dates for that schedule.
Thank you.
Item 40 has already been heard, and our master plan is adopted. Item 41 is the introduction of another proposed ordinance amendment. This is adopting development fees and setting a public hearing date for January 14th. And with us here, we have Jeff Butler from the Planning Department to provide a presentation so that the public and the audience understands what's being proposed. And I might just do a little bit of a brief setup.
We have our Public Works Director here, too, maybe?
We do. We have a couple of staff members who've worked on this present, and just to give the group a little bit of background on this issue, this is something that the city and development community have been working on for many, many years. It has gone a certain distance and then been put on hold. It's been brought back over the last couple of years. We've been working on some revised language. We've been working with different groups representing residential developers and non-residential developers. We've come up with a proposal for adopting impact fees. Jeff will walk us through some of the details with that, but it would basically be a new fee for transportation and parks and recreation. The group that's been working on this project has consisted of many of our different representatives from city departments, our municipal councillor's office, city manager's office, that's the internal group that's been working on how to lay this out, and then we've had representatives from Central Oklahoma Home Builders Association and trying to get good representation across the non-residential spectrum with commercial and office and multifamily developers and mixed-use developers of small scale and large scale. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Butler, and he'll take us through the basics of the ordinance.
Okay. I'm going to go to the next slide there. In fact, maybe it's number three. Well, I can click it here. There we go. See if this'll work. Maybe just click, click to the next slide, please. This doesn't seem to be working, so we'll just do that way. Okay, so, impact fees, you've, most of us, I think, in this room have seen a lot of these slides, but, so it'll be a review, but just as a quick overview of what development fees are and what they're for, there are one-time charges on development, and they're used to construct infrastructure that is, that is associated with that development, so that is demanded by that development. And it's a form of land use regulation that was developed to ensure that, that new facilities are brought online in time to not only serve new development, but prevent levels of service from dropping for existing development. Okay, next slide, please. So, the benefits are that they, as I said, they help levels of service remain constant. They ensure infrastructure is installed in a timely manner. They help diversify the city's revenue base. And the last bullet there, they help us make the distribution of costs between developers equitable so that we don't have this last one in pays everything, for example, in the case of an intersection improvement or something. So, it has those benefits, and that's, those kind of summarizes why we're going down this road. Next slide, please. So, as Aubrey said, we've met with stakeholders numerous times, and the proposal that we have before us right now, the proposed ordinance, is the result of all of that deliberation and research that staff has done. So, just, just right here, if you want to click there one more time, it'll, the point here is just that we know, we've known from the beginning that impact fees are not the answer. They're not going to provide all the funding we need, but it will be shared with bond funds that will continue to be needed as well. But the hope is that with impact fees, we'll be able to have a little more resources to provide for this new development that's coming, and that we'll be able to spend some, redirect some bond funds to some areas of the city that have been neglected in the past and may need improvements. Next slide, please. So, impact fees cannot be used to fund operation or maintenance of infrastructure. Listed there, everything the state statute allows impact fees to be used for. We've already adopted water, new water impact fees. This today is about streets and parks. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Impact fees have to meet the dual rational nexus test. In other words, in order for them to be legally valid, they need to, the fee payers have to derive some benefit that's, not tangible, but some benefit that is easy to explain, and we've done analysis to make sure that we're doing that. And the fees are supposed to be reasonably attributed to new development, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on as to how we've done that. Okay, next slide, please. So, there's a couple of methods that we can use, and we've, we've used a plan-based method for parks because we have a Parks Master Plan that's been recently adopted. So, that makes it pretty simple and straightforward. We can estimate the cost based on the improvements recommended by the plan and spread that over the projected growth. The consumption-based method we're using for streets, and that's a little bit different. We don't have a streets master plan, a comprehensive streets master plan. So, in lieu of that, we, we're charging a certain rate per unit of capacity demanded for each unit of development, which in our case is going to be square feet. So, we're proposing that so that the city, so that the impact fee doesn't lose value over time due to inflation, that we have an adjustment. And that is currently in use for a couple of things the city does, the fee in lieu of sidewalk and the fee in lieu of stormwater detention. Just for information, those are the, the average increase that you see in construction costs annually, about 3.2% a year. Okay, next slide, please. And the next one. So, I mentioned the Parks Master Plan, all the things that it does, identifying the, all the opportunities in infrastructure that's needed, park infrastructure. Next slide, please. The way that we've estimated the park need, first, first thing we do is we look at what would we do, or how much would it cost for 100% recovery? And so, we look at the amount of parks that are needed just for new growth. We look at the total cost. We project the number of square feet that we think we'll have, and it turns out to, in the case of regional parks, 49 cents per square foot for residential. Now, that's a 100% fee, where we realize, like I said from the beginning, that that's not going to happen, so that's where we get into discussions with our stakeholders. If you can go to the next one. So, you can see there, the local parks has the same process, and also the trails, just estimating how many trails we think we'll need based on the Parks Master Plan, and again, only applying that to the new growth, not everyone. So, next slide, please. Important to mention that we wanted to allow for exemptions in the case of existing parks, so that, you know, if somebody builds next to a park that exists, there's no need to pay that portion of the impact fee. And there's the, kind of the criteria for that. And also, for, for private development, there's, there's a provision that allows developer to get a partial exemption if they're building their own private park in the subdivision, and that's something that would be, that would be arranged at the planning stage, and an agreement would be made, and the developer would, would commit to building it to city standards. Here's the map for the local park, park coverage, so if, if you were to build in one of these green areas, you would be, you would have a partial exemption from the fee for parks. These are the benefit areas. Anything that is, any fee that is collected in these areas also must be spent in these areas, and that's to meet one of those parts of the dual rational nexus test. So, the, as, through the stakeholder process, you know, we looked at these fees and home builders, which are the, is the group that will be paying these fees. The parks fee is, is not charged for commercial development of any kind. They felt that they could, they could agree to a 25% cost recovery rate, so that's why the fee is set like it is, at 26 cents for parks and 11 cents for trails. And that's the projected revenue for the city, about $2 million, which, you know, we'll obviously still need a lot of bond money to, to build, build parks, but that's very helpful to get us where we need to go. So, in summary, again, it's based on the Parks Master Plan. I did not mention yet that the, it will be phased in over the course of, well, put it a better way, the, the payers will have a 50% discount for the first year. So, that would be until July 1 of 2017. They'd pay half of the impact fee, and that's just to give people time to get used to the system and plan for it in their performas and all that they do. Partial exemptions, again, and the, the annual adjustment. So, with that, we'll go on to the streets. Next slide, please. The streets, as I said, is based on the consumption method. We've got geographic differentiation, which is important because the average trip is longer as you go from the core out into the new growth or the rural areas. So, next slide, please. So, we've got benefit areas again in the, in the streets impact fee ordinance, and we also have what we're calling assessment areas. So, if you can go to the next slide, this map shows both. So, the core area in the blue there is, everybody would pay the same amount in the blue area. The same, by the same token, everybody pays the same amount anywhere in the green area, even though there's three separate benefit areas. So, that just means if you're in I-3, for example, on the south side, everything that is collected there, again, is spent there, but it's got the same, basically the same kind of travel patterns, or in other words, the same trip lengths as other green areas or infill areas, and so everybody pays the same. We have five different categories in, for non-residential land use impact fees, and the ordinance has a detailed list of all of the uses that would fall into each one of these broad categories. And it's, it's based on trips, so you can see the red lines there are the number of trips generated by the land uses. So, something that you would see in the high category over there, the customer-oriented high would be a fast food restaurant or a gas station. Okay, next slide, please. So, real quick, we did some preliminary estimates just to see how it would shake out, and we got some really high numbers, which we expected to see. So, if you look in the new growth area, the red line there that's high, on the very, on the right-hand side, you'll see that the fee for 100% cost recovery would be $107, which is, again, very high. We knew that we wouldn't be charging that, but that shows us kind of the impact that trips have, and it's based on trips because that's, that helps us determine how much a particular use uses the system. So, if you go to the next slide. We worked with, with the stakeholder groups to come up with some, some caps that would be feasible. So, the staff worked out several pro formas for different development types, industrial, office, customer-oriented, and we came back with some caps that we felt like were reasonable. So, we would say, well, we know that the preliminary analysis says the fee would be this high, but we're going to cap it here because that seems to be reasonable, affordable. And based on that input, they, the stakeholders went back, came back and asked us to reduce it a little bit, which we did, by about a third. And so, what you see here is the final fees for transportation, broken out by the different assessment areas and the uses. And there's the projected revenue, and I think if you click one more, it'll show that. Yeah, so, just for informational purposes, between, we did a little bit of research and wanted to see kind of how much the city has spent over the past several years on adding capacity to streets to accommodate new growth, and it's been about $20 million a year. So, the 6.7 doesn't, doesn't get us there, of course, but it does make a difference. So, in some...
Doesn't address all of the catch-up we need to do, either. You're just talking about what was spent, not what's needed.
Yes, absolutely not. Yeah, it does, it does not do that, which, like I said, is one reason we'd like to do it. We can divert some money from GeoBond to, to help make up some of that, make up for lost time. I think I covered everything here. It has the same phase-in as the parks, and that applies to both residential and non-residential. And it also comes with the agreement that the city will no longer require traffic impact analyses. Rather, the city will start planning for these small areas that, that you saw on the map earlier, the benefit areas. So, that's a new thing for the city. We need to start, that will be an adjustment, but we think that over the long term, that will be really helpful to be able to plan for all the infrastructure that is, that's needed. Next slide. So, just the last few slides here will show you some comparisons. There's our proposed fee. As you can see, we're pretty comparable with the proposed fee. We're, we're near peer cities, well below national averages excluding California and the national average. There are some really high fees up there in various places you may or may not expect to see. And there's also our local cities, Edmund and Norman. Edmund's a little lower, Norman's a little higher. Next slide, please. Here it is for, sorry, that previous slide was for residential. This is for non-residential. You can see by the different types of uses, we're also pretty comparable, what we felt was a reasonable level compared to other peer cities. Next slide, please. And finally, here is a, here is a, if we were to kind of build some hypothetical buildings in various cities, our neighboring cities, this is how it would shake out. If you were to build a single-family home, the transportation fee proposed would be $1,100, and that's a 2,000-square-foot home by comparison. And Moore, Moore has the only transportation fee at the moment, although Norman does kind of do a negotiated-type, type deal. But the other cities do charge, charge more for water and wastewater, Edmund and Norman, and Mustang charges quite a bit as well. So, the next steps, if, if all goes according to, to kind of our outline here, the public hearing would be on January 14th, and there are three hearings at City Council. So, if you have any questions on the, on the analysis or the details for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yep. I guess we're here from Sean, who signed up to address us.
I did, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Sean Rieger, 136 Thompson Drive. I will be very brief. I know the meeting is long, and I have to get the Norman Plain Commission shortly, but I represent the Oklahoma, the Central Oklahoma Home Builders Association in this matter. We're very appreciative of staff, Ms. Hammond Tree, Mr. Keith in the back, who's been working with me extensively on this. There are still about five items left that we're still working on. I would simply encourage you to encourage staff to continue to work with us. We hope to come back to you at the next meeting with an agreed draft that we can be comfortable with, and I think we're very close to that. There were literally about five paragraphs left in this 30-some-page document that, that we're working on. So, again, I thank you very much. I encourage you to encourage them to continue that good work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for staying.
You're welcome.
Bill, are you just listening?
I am just listening.
Okay. Craig, or Eric, or Danny, or any of you, anything to add? Nice to see you. Discussion commissioners?
I move this, set it for, whatever we're going to set it for.
January 14th.
14th. So, move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set item 41 for public hearing on the 14th of January. Cast your votes. It is set. Mr. Gales is not here. That's better. Thank you. And Planning Department. Development Services left already. Municipal Councillor. Citizens to be heard. Happy holidays, everyone.
I have something.
We're going to miss Nick.
Just a minute, before you do that. I've emailed JJ a couple of times about the parking lot of the new Sam's store being built at the intersection of May Avenue and 39th. Sam's store being built at the intersection of May Avenue and 39th, and just asking whether or not the parking lot complies with parking lot landscaping requirements. When I drive by it, it's a vast wasteland of asphalt, and so does it comply or not?
Maybe they didn't plant their little sticks yet.
There's no place for them.
I mean, I haven't looked at it, but...
This is my point. I just want to know, are they in compliance? Because if they're not, well then, let me know. If they are, let me know. Okay?
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Happy holidays, happy new year. See you next year. Be well.
Same to you, and same to the staff, and same to the Planning Department. You do a great job, and I hope you all have safe travels wherever you go. Thank you so much.
And we're adjourned.